We don't have a form. Oh, okay. Again, here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I take care of those items now before the manifest review? Or after?
I would take care of them now. Actually, no, after, because it might be more public here.
Yeah, okay, so we'll do the manifest review? I think it's going right.
Uh.
My kids were hiding out on the as well. They thought I was going to come in.
Please.
You know, right? How come this one didn't get sent out? Mr. Stevens, if the invoice is here.
That was, if you recall, from a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. We had an estimate, but there's an invoice here dated on the 26th of June.
You guys asked us to table it until work was done?
Oh, when the work just got done?
And we pulled it out and we're putting it back in.
Okay, because I saw it last week. Okay.
And what's mine, you just being able to proposal with that invoice?
Yes, it is. And then there's another one for Mr. Stevens for a small amount of money for Captain McGee.
Fifteen hundred dollars is a small amount. Back to the pavement. It's heavy down.
Yep. It did not. It was a big, it was a handwritten, big invoice. Draw me a bullet for you. I did bring my schedule for the following day. I'm not available Tuesdays and Thursdays. I only have to like six o'clock. I'm not, so.
Wait.
It would have to be like six o'clock. I could probably do Wednesday at like eight thirty. Are they on this time? So we'll just have to see what the flexibility is.
Um.
Okay, thank you for getting that.
So, noticing some of the invoices, the title insurance on the property, where did that go through? Title insurance on that? Is there anything else on that? It was title insurance bought, right? On the property that was for the proposed parking. What did that title insurance, if we bought it, what did it provide? Why we, I mean, if it was provided through the attorneys, why are we spending money on attorney's fees to give the issue? The title is hardly found to be clear, previous, prior, latest, knowledge. What's the procedure to, to? What good is title insurance if we're still continuing to pay?
Do you mean make a claim? How do you find out what company provided the insurance? And how do you make a claim so they cover the fees incurred right now?
Well, what's covered when you take it up?
If the school district in the past has bought title insurance.
For the current property.
The property lot issued. And in their title resource, there was not a problem. But as times gone on and more research is done, now there's a problem. Shouldn't it have been picked up first time? And why is the Wakefield School District?
It should be no cost to us.
It should be no cost to us, is my point. So, the question is, we're paying, I'm noticing that we're paying bills on it. And is that right?
Have they been gone down? Has the title and title insurance company been gone down?
The parcel in question is in between the two, is that correct?
Yes.
So, it may be an instance. Well, yes and no, right?
Yes and no, because really, should there be a question when it's already went through the first title search? And it was cleared?
But it just didn't go through. So what I'm saying is, did we have title insurance for that transaction? Because it may be one of those things that they're going to say, we need insurance for both to cover the piece in between. So I would think that that would be investigated and looked into, maybe put on the next.
If the seller?
Because it was the intent of the, of the purchase to buy the entire thing.
That's what I'm saying.
And the seller believed that she owned the entire thing. And that was evident when she went and had a boundary line adjustment done in the parcel that was on the tax maps, that's the new question now, was removed from the tax maps.
Have they been contacted yet?
I haven't.
Okay. Have we had any other, have we had any paperwork signed yet?
So paying bills is my point, is my problem.
It may be one of, it may be a type of insurance that you have to consolidate, you know, consolidate all your bills and if the final thing, they'll cut it back.
Acting?
I don't know. We'll have to figure it out, they'll have to investigate it.
They should be gone, be one of the first one to contact, I would think.
Put it in the numbers.
There was no footage on that invoice. It just said here.
Well, it did actually, it was actually, it was very accurate to it.
The fifteen hundred?
Oh, no, the pavement, I didn't see that. It's probably the curving, that is.
Oh, no, I meant, I was.
I think the same area that the curving was, I mean, you had to cut into the pavement to do the curving. So there's a logical conclusion that you need to replace the pavement.
I, a motion to approve the manifest?
I'll make a motion.
Second it? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Aye.
I can stand.
So that means, that means you don't pay bills?
Please third signature.
You mean you don't pay bills? Checks are all passed and signed. It doesn't matter whether or not, it's all, everything is a done deal right here.
They're not signed.
The treasurer doesn't sign the checks.
They must be cut, but they need to be approved. So we're going to not pay these bills this week, is that what we're saying, boys?
I hope to approve the manifest in order to pay the bills, but I'm not happy, like, at all. I don't think that everybody in this pile should be questioned. There are things in the pile that need to be questioned. We never get answers. But we hardly ever ask the questions, so.
Whoa, can't we, can't we pick and choose?
No. I'll do it with a heavy conscience.
Note taken, thank you. If we always have a question in the meeting, there are things that we need to add to the agenda, please. Nine A, at the request of Chairman Joy, would like to have that item put on the next agenda so she can be present. Twelve.
I don't agree with that. I think it's on the agenda and it's people probably here that are ready to hear the issue. I don't understand why Mrs. Joy would have it on the agenda and then not be here.
It was added to the agenda and she is out of town. And she made a request by Thursday at noon to have it changed. And so, um.
Well, it was going to be taken off the agenda Thursday at noon, huh?
I think it was, it was after twelve o'clock.
Well, there was some things that I requested to be put on the agenda, ten minutes to noon, and they're on the agenda. So how does that work?
It was after.
It was afternoon that she requested it to be taken off?
She only kept on the agenda and brought up the air to be tabled. If, that's how we work the balance, so she can be here to speak. It's up to the board to whether we want to do it or not, to the next agenda.
I believe where she's the one that put the initial action into place, that it's due respect to her, as well as to you, to have her present to speak for herself. As we would want you present to be able to speak for yourself.
I wouldn't bring action like this, it's probably going to begin with. We wasted a bunch of taxpayers' money.
That's your opinion, Mr. Fogg, and I appreciate that.
It's a fact. We wasted a lot of taxpayers' money on this issue. And the allegations that Mrs. Joy brought forward are false. And she never even brought in a ounce of evidence that I had released non-public information from a non-public meeting.
I think that.
That is her allegation, and I believe.
So she should be here to speak on it, Mr. Fogg?
I think this issue was a continued waste of time and money and effort.
I, I respect your opinion.
I also wanted to brought up the question in the first place. Mrs. Joy emailed me, said she was going to be out of town, asked me if I had any objection to going on the next agenda, if, or if you, Bonnie, would want to speak to it. I said I'd prefer to have it on the next agenda. Of course, it's your decision, so.
Well, I spoke to Mrs. Joy the same morning that Thursday, Friday to noon, and she never asked me if I would mind to object to having it moved to the next agenda. I don't understand that.
Well, why would she ask you if she asked you? She'd have to ask the rest of the board members. And that's something that would be done in a meeting, and that's what she's doing right now, what Bonnie's doing.
I don't mind putting it off on the, on the next agenda, because it's a perfect example of what this board continues to do, and it's been noted by members of the public in the past.
We're a part of you. Thank you for your comment. And then twelve, we need to add B and J. B will be for nominations and resignations, and J will be for legal matters. Minutes of the last meeting? Ms. Fogg?
I have one correction that will be taken care of under, on page four of seven, which will be a budget, school board member to present budget to, budget, present to budget committee?
Yep.
It's noted in the numerical parts in the parentheses, it's four to one. But Bonnie, I believe you.
It was I that opposed.
Yes, and Steve, he voted in the affirmative. So I think that just needs to be amended correctly.
Yes, please. Any other corrections?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as amended.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Non-public minutes of Wednesday, the nineteenth? I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of Wednesday, August nineteenth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vicious comments? I don't know whose hand goes up first. Ms. Judy?
I just wanted to let the board know I received a phone call from Mr. Tersey today. The school attorney reviewed the withdrawal report and said that it meets all the requirements.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
She did make one suggestion to add a sentence to the, somewhere in the report that says that neither district will have to construct any schools.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you with the fan.
Neither district will have to construct schools.
Okay.
So we just need to add that sentence to the report, and we scheduled a meeting for Monday night, uh, Tuesday night, excuse me, Monday's the holiday.
Thank you. Ms. Lee?
Seeing today was the first day of school, correct?
No. Tuesday, Monday.
Okay, I thought the calendar said Thursday.
It was this fall, I believe. Freshmen went today?
No.
Freshmen.
Freshmen went today, upperclassmen go tomorrow.
Doesn't make any sense. Is, I'd like to know how many schools that we have this shift at the whole school?
Hard to say right now exactly what those numbers are.
As of today?
Well, it's, we got kids who are on the roster that haven't shown up. We're trying to track them down. My nearest number I have right now is four forty-two.
I'm sorry?
Four forty-two.
Okay, out of those four hundred and forty-two, how many are preschoolers?
Haven't gotten that broken down yet.
Okay. How many teachers do we have?
Oh, I'd have to count them up again, yeah, it's, but.
You don't know how many teachers you have on the board right now?
I'd have to count them. I have to hear. Get those specific questions, Mr. Lee, if you want to write them out, provide you that information, please. We didn't come prepared with that information this evening.
Okay. The other question I have is, I asked a question at the last board meeting. Is that going to be addressed tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions from the public? Mrs. Bulbath?
I'm confused, I want to ask something about your minutes. During the manifest review and approval, you were discussing having your manifest approved at five and the meeting begin at five thirty?
Oh, I thought it was five fifteen.
No, it says five thirty here.
Okay.
Is that what you're going to do? Because I won't have to come in here at four thirty and give me an extra half hour. I mean, I'm not, I know you're not doing it for me, but if that, in fact, if you're going to wait till five thirty to begin your meeting.
Sorry, my, that's my bad. Mr. Fogg?
Being part of the main meeting and doing that for Clearview Community TV, you may want to be here when the gavel drops as the manifest is addressed. Because that's what the policies for the Clearview Community TV call for, gavel to gavel.
Why don't you do the gavel after the man?
I want another question. Will you entertain a question during your discussion with, over the Gatsby forty-five?
Over the what?
When you discuss the Gatsby forty-five, will you entertain a question?
Sure. Yep.
And, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I was wondering, are the MS forms, do September, the MS forms do September first?
Yes, DOE twenty-five?
Are they done?
Yes, they're very close. Very close.
Thank you.
We're way ahead of schedule from last year.
I, it is absolute, my goal is to have it done tomorrow.
So when does that mean you're going to have us come and sign it?
I believe the correct procedure is to submit it, to have them look over it first, and then to give it back with the corrections.
Okay.
That's when I get it printed up and signed.
All right. Mrs. Bulbath?
One more. Is your new MS interventionist an HQT teacher?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes, yes.
Yes? Thank you.
Seeing no more public comments. Ethan?
I have the expense report through August first.
Hey, so what's going on with the teacher salary, what come with?
Teacher salaries, that's the result of a bunch of different shifts in positions.
Is it also the additional teacher?
Yes, this is. So between the additional teacher and the shifts that have been made, that's the difference, is the twenty-six thousand. That one will be over all year long. Is it going to grow? True.
No, because that's the complete encumbrance, right, encumbrance? Unless we have staffing changes, that should stay the same?
Exactly, yes. As of right now, without any, any changes, it will be the same.
Mr. Brown?
We were down to how much? We had a discussion that we were going to be very tight on the budget. And now we're already twenty-seven thousand in the hole for teachers?
Yes, we could be savings in other areas.
So do you, when you, I guess I'm going to ask, when you, when we make decisions to change monies from line to line, do you do them now so that the line isn't a negative all year? Or do you wait until the end of the year?
Well, we, the school board has approved the change.
I understand that, but we already have. We've already approved some changes. So that means if we approve the changes, then they should be demonstrated on the, on the expense report.
We've approved some reductions of lines.
Yes.
And this doesn't reflect an amendment to the overall operating budget for those reductions at this point. We, there weren't any changes to lines, where there wasn't a move from line to line. But what you'd see, let's say that the teacher salaries are over by twenty-six thousand dollars. If you recall in our presentation, there's also going to be savings in our high school tuition number, which hasn't been encumbered at this point. So if you, if you see an overage, you should see a savings in another line to make up for that overage.
And what the special edge on the salary?
That's what I'm going to, new ABH.
Will all these factored in via to where we've made a decision that adding additional classes, that the budget was going to be extremely tight?
Yes, but anything from this point forward, anything that happens from the start of the school year, let's say we have a student that moves in that's going to require special services, that's not part of the overall schedule that we had prior to this, sorry, this new year's starting. So some of those are not controlled policy.
But that's where the capital reserve function will kick in.
That's true.
And what about summer school?
So it's just out of salaries, throwing people on?
So it's just out of salaries, throwing people on right below it? Is that what you're talking about?
It's $7,000 in the hole. That's not going to happen until almost a year from now.
No, that's for this past summer school program.
Starting July first?
Yes. The program started July third. So the money's encumbered for this past summer.
And why are we over so much?
That depends on the students that participate in the extended school year and what support they need. We can't anticipate that until the spring.
Anything else, gentlemen?
What, what do I work in?
Go ahead, Nathan.
The next report I have is the revenue report, happened as well as the other ones are through August. Any questions on that report?
What monies are we still waiting for?
Do you want to line it up in the little grants, if that's what you're looking for?
No, that's all right. I'll email you my questions. I know they're all right here.
Can we, um, go back to the transportation coordinator?
I think that represents a split that's not included in the year.
That, we do, it's just, we are planning on doing it every month. So it won't be this negative, but basically in the past, we, in around May or June, we've done a rough sum and transferred it over. And then Milton, on Milton's side, we do the same with these facilities directly.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean, we've got double the amount that we budgeted that's been encumbered.
Because you cover the full amount of the salary because Wakefield pays the full amount and then it's reimbursed by Milton. So you budgeted the 25,000, the full salary's 50, and then Milton reimbursed the additional 25,000, covering their share. As the year goes on, that number's going to go down.
Mr. Bog?
What happens if Milton decides to vote against paying for it? We've already covered all the monies.
That's not going to be the case.
Not going to be the case? On the revenue, all funds, I don't see any, we get kickbacks from Milton when they use our buses? I don't see any line that shows a fund coming to the school when Milton School District uses Wakefield School District's buses. Why don't we get some sort of reimbursement from that? Maybe Milton Board decided to vote against it? Has it ever been an issue? Should be. Wakefield's buses are going into Milton, picking up Milton students. Why wouldn't it be an issue?
What are you referring to?
I'm referring to following the Wakefield bus out of the town in Milton last, Milton Mills actually last week. So if it's happening and we're witnessing it, you know, I mean, that's my own personal experience. So I would think, my question is kind of to the point. Do we get reminders from Milton when they use our buses?
Would you like to put that on the next agenda and how Mr. Tersey investigated? Because at this point in time, the way that you're describing it, we don't understand. I mean, we understand he used our bus, but we don't know which child was on the bus or what the situation was.
No, I know exactly what happened. That was the first day of school. There was a Milton bus that broke down. We had elementary students waiting at the bus stop in Milton to grab the Wakefield bus to do the run because we had to get those kids to school. And then the buses returned. Same thing would happen if the Wakefield bus broke down. Those were elementary to grab a Milton bus to make a run the first day of school.
I think that that should be, where the buses are paid for by the separate district, I do believe that this should be some cost involved if they utilize one of our vehicles and vice versa. There has to be a yin and a yang to that situation to keep the books clear.
That we could put that on the next agenda, we'll discuss that.
I think-
Well, but see, we're talking about Wakefield's tax dollars being spent to haul on that Milton kids. Never a discussion, I don't believe I've ever seen Milton bus pick up Wakefield kids. And we're going to bring it to the joint SAU board to discuss it and they're going to say, well, with their weighted vote, we're not going to give you anything for that. We've already witnessed the whole scenario. I wasn't there to witness it, I'm glad, but I read the minutes. With a weighted vote, Wakefield taxpayers are carrying Milton once again.
Mr. Brown?
We've been told that the reason why we carry four spare buses is because it costs $500 a day to rent a bus. We go out, Wakefield goes out and buys buses on a regular basis. We, it's pretty safe to say that we probably buy a new bus almost every year. Milton, on the other hand, does not. And I have a problem with Milton borrowing our buses because Milton sits back and says, we don't need to buy new buses because Wakefield is, and if we have an issue, we'll just use one of theirs. We, there needs to, that is not right. And I also heard from people that Milton, Wakefield buses were being used, I heard three that were used last week in Milton on Milton runs. So we have a serious problem.
Before we take that to the joint board, can you just clarify that information from us and maybe bring it to our agenda so we can discuss it as a board?
In detail.
Once we get more information and then we can make a decision, the five of us, on where we want to go and what we want to do and what we want to propose to Milton. Mrs. Nasing?
That probably shouldn't be happening with previous board to vote to stop that practice. And I don't think that this board has changed it.
Is there a policy in Wakefield for that?
It was a vote.
It was a vote, but I don't know, I, um-
It's board action, it looks to be.
If that's a board action, Michael, can you do a little research?
See, you know, you were on the board, Karen.
Yeah.
Yep. So if that's the case, then we need to follow that.
We put a stop to that.
Okay.
So it's always been done before?
Yep. Let's find out the day and the time and have everything brought to the next agenda for discussion and confirmation.
We're buying new buses on a regular basis. They don't, but they don't have to. If they know, they got Wakefield, we have four spare buses.
Are we all in agreement to bring it to the next agenda with more information? Nathan?
Morning.
No, just continue. I'm sorry.
It's still on, it's on.
Okay.
Got it, too. Was, the next report is, ran over here.
Any questions for Nathan?
I have one question. What could be identified as indirect cost on the 435-2500-58100-015-4940? What would fall under that category?
So the indirect costs are what we need to write into grants that we get reimbursed through the grant for the management of the grants at the local level?
So can you give us a couple examples of what indirect costs are for that amount of money? Okay, looking at the very bottom line in 435-2500, page two?
I'm on, I'm looking at page three of three.
Okay.
Page three, I guess is the two packet.
Okay.
Top of the page, just above the total 435 federal grants.
The 178560?
Yeah.
Are you also questioning the dues on page two of 291299? What dues those are?
I didn't notice that one, but, I mean, it's just, I just need to-
Two thousand, four thousand, five thousand.
Can you send us a breakdown of what those indirect costs are, Nathan?
I mean, it looks like the money's been promised by the federal government in covering these costs. I'm just curious what the federal government's covering the costs.
Can you send us a breakdown in your little red ink this week and just tell us what those are?
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you, Nathan. Seven, school administrative unit 64 residency?
The first item on the agenda was under this is residency. At the last meeting, there was a question around five students. Number five was thrown out there for students that were non-residents that were attending Paul School. That number's correct. It was four homeless students and one student unemployed. Makes up five.
Does that answer your questions sufficiently?
No. If we go back a number of years, we had a situation where we had teachers that lived out of town and their children were allowed to attend Paul School. We, the board, at that point in time, said that they would allow the children to continue to attend the school until such time as they moved on. At which time, they said they would not allow this practice to continue. If it is continuing, it is a, I don't know if it's a violation or not, but still, the Wakefield taxpayers are paying for children that are attending this school without any sort of tuition and pay back for them to attend. My first question is, why is this continuing to happen? Because it's the same situation. We have a teacher that's here, that's not a resident, and the child is attending the school.
It's the last one, sir, out of the ones that were grandfathered.
Um, now, if we go back five years, would it?
Yes, sir. Everyone else has been placed outside of districts closer to their home and this is the last young man, who was very young when the situation was brought up before. And this, he's the last one here.
Okay, so he's the very last-
Yes, sir.
So he must have been in the first grade or the second grade.
He was very young when the situation was, yes, it was.
And it's the same teacher?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I'm thinking ma'am because it's, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the teacher.
In regard to the homeless, I don't understand the policy of the school.
Can you explain that?
As far as allowing homeless people?
Yep.
We're required to have homeless students attend our school. It's the, it's the district that the student was originally in that, once they become homeless, it's the district that they originated.
Identify, identify to me a homeless child.
Does not have a permanent residence.
So he's living in a car, a bus, with a parent who is also homeless.
Or another town that's not considered a permanent residence, they might be staying with a friend or so forth. It's not their permanent residence, so it's certainly not required to maintain.
State law, is that correct? There's a specific law and specific paperwork that needs to be filled out per student.
And what is, and what, and what, if anything, can be done about this?
Nothing, unless the law's changed.
Mr. Bog?
Is the district also required to provide housing for homeless students? Because I, I mean, if, if there's a situation where somebody's living in a cardboard box on the side of the street, I mean, that's homeless. In a car, that's homeless. If they have a relative that lives three towns over or three counties over and they driving back and forth every night, they got a roof over their head, they got family, then I don't know if they should consider that homeless. And if-
The statute is very clear, Mr. Bog. And sometimes it's in the best interest of the child where we really have to consider when everything else goes willy-nilly with these young men and women of our town, the one thing that can be consistent when they're considered homeless is the security of knowing that they come to the same building and sit in the same classroom and have the same adults looking over for them.
Get a meal.
Exactly.
I support it.
So that's, I-
But I don't support the idea of, you know, if you got a, if you got a family member living 10 miles away out of town, going, you're going driving over there every night, you've got a roof over your head, that's not homeless.
I think that we don't, I don't think we have the right to make that statute for the federal government.
I believe, I believe it's a permanent residence. So if you're living with a family member, they don't consider that a permanent residence.
You would you be in rent to them?
Well, no, 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 that's, that's different. There's different classifications and what's the name of the law? If you'd like to look it up for more information. It gives you the specific guidelines of what we have to follow to even have a child be considered homeless in the district. And what's the name of, I know I have it somewhere. McKinney-Vento.
Can we add this to non-public, please?
Yeah, under what?
Why, we're not talking about any specific individual, we're talking about a situation.
Well, no, I understand that, but I would like to question, but you can't question it without getting into specifics because, yeah, I'm having a little problem that there's a child that's still under that grandfather. So I just would like to-
We've mentioned no names. I understand that because of the non-public, you're talking about specific individuals. They ain't named, we haven't named any individuals. We've identified a situation where we have a teacher, I have no idea who the teacher is, whose child is going to the school and we're talking about homeless individuals that-
We really need to end this conversation.
Yep. Before we get, before we get into trouble, should we, for clarification for the board members, should we put it on non-public? Would you, just so that you can clarify which student it is? What letter is that?
Under C.
Under C, okay. Any other questions, Ms. Lee?
Are the homeless individuals still attending the school? So the same homeless people that are, this is the last year for the teacher. Are the homeless four individuals still attending the school this year?
That's ever-changing. Yeah, change.
It's ever-changing. Situations change daily, minutes to minutes, sometimes weeks to weeks.
Did I have an answer by the next minute, thank you?
Anything else on that topic?
Mr. Lee, I had to answer your list of questions. I will address it, please.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
And you can send those questions to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Smarter balanced assessment results.
Yeah, I just want to give the board an update. The anticipated release of smarter balanced assessment results is beginning in November. It's later than was anticipated due to, there were some districts that
It's later than was anticipated due to, there were some districts that opted for the paper pencil version, and the paper pencil version is taking more longer to, to assess and get those results back compared to the electronic version, so the results will be released when all districts have all of the results ready. So the anticipated time right now is the beginning of November. I just want to let the board know that if you're asking a question.
Why can't we get ours?
Because they're going to be released statewide, and it's not fair for one district to get some and another district not, so it's being released district-wide.
Is that because, is that because it's being sent out to a third party? I mean, it's, it's, isn't this the reason why we have computers? So we can get things done more quickly?
Maybe not every district is lucky as we know.
Correct. So some districts in the first, first round had an option to use paper pencil, so those results are taking longer to come back, and the release is going to be statewide, so they're going to go out statewide.
Thank you. C, facilities directors' hours?
Yeah, there was a question around this last, last meeting. I'll give you some averages. So the first, let's see, one, two, three years that facilities director was working in both Milton and Wakefield was an average of twenty or more hours a week. Summer of two thousand thirteen was an average of fifteen to twenty hours per week. It was a time that our, one of our current head custodians was out for a time, and that was twenty hours minimum. Summer two thousand fourteen averaged eleven to fourteen hours a week. Typically during the year is eleven to fifteen hours during the week. This past summer was three to five hours per week, and since school started, it's eight to ten hours a week. And you'll see there's a variance, because it depends on the projects that are going on. This year, Milton was heavy in construction projects, so it takes the director's time. In the summer two thousand ten, eleven, and twelve, there was the abatement projects that were going on here, so more time was being spent in Wakefield. So it really varies based on the needs of each district.
Can I ask why he's not attending the nightly meetings and he's sending Joe?
The question, that came up the last meeting, that's because I asked Joe to come to that meeting, because Joe was doing the work specifically.
Even like when it's about the sheds and about the paving, why is he not here? Why is Joe representing? Well, why aren't they here together? Is there, I mean...
It depends on availability as well, so it's, it varies.
Does that answer everyone's questions?
How are we getting our money's worth?
Concerns are heard, Mr. Bog.
No reason for withdrawal.
Comment is heard, Mr. Brown. Eight, new business, September sixteenth, school board meeting.
Yeah, this is, I'm unable to attend the next school board meeting, so I spoke with Chairman Joy to see if she'd like to reschedule it or have it, if, have it without me, and she said she preferred to reschedule it, so I'm asking the board if that's what she'd like to do or have it in my absence. I have been invited to go to a conference in Washington, D.C. as what's known as the field rep for the state of New Hampshire. We're going with a team of educators from the Bureau of Integrator Programs to a conference that's titled Closing the Achievement Gap, which we all know is an issue, and have an opportunity to represent the state of New Hampshire, but more importantly, represent SAU sixty-four in roundtable discussions about some of the things that other districts around the country are doing to minimize their achievement gap. So I'll be going to D.C., and I will be there for the sixteen, and I'm just hoping to reschedule it so that I can be at the next board meeting. If not, we have the board meeting.
What's the consensus of the next, what's the consensus of the board?
I'd like to hold a regular scheduled meeting, because I myself, and I think some people in town, they adhere to their schedules for certain days, at certain times in the month, and I, for one, have a pretty tight schedule this time of the year. So I would appreciate it if we could keep it the same day, to listen to that.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
When, when were you notified of this?
I don't, I don't think that should matter. He can...
Well, no, it does matter, because I'd like to know when, when he was, it was requested that he attend, and what's the cost of the school district?
I was asked to attend on August sixth. I'm sorry, August seventh, and there is no cost of the school district.
August seventh. How come we're just finding out about this now?
Because it wasn't confirmed until recently.
Do you have a...
No, the only date I heard was the twenty-second. I can't make it, so I'm going to have to try to show up.
I don't have a problem switching the date. I know Mrs. Joy doesn't have a problem switching the date. I, I don't know if we want to just take a consensus. Would you be available? You have every other Wednesday for Milton. Are you thinking of having it that week, like, say, Thursday? Or what, what were your, what were you hoping for? And then we can consider it.
I was thinking either Monday or Tuesday, twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth.
I do believe that would give the townspeople enough time to readjust their schedules if need be. I know that I would have to readjust my work schedule to be able to accommodate either of those days, whether I have enough time to claim coverage. Mr. Brown?
But then that puts us at a, a meeting...
The following week.
A following week, back-to-back, and I don't know if that...
It also comes with other board meetings that I have to attend.
Me too.
And, you know, if I can't attend it, the next meeting is going to have on the agenda the request for Ralph Bog's resignation. I guess I don't have to be there.
Well, I guess I would think that it would be in the best interest of all of us to maybe have Mr. Tursey here for that discussion.
I don't know about that. I'm finding the experience more and more, that maybe we don't need constant guidance.
Okay, so if someone would like to make a suggestion on what they'd like to see done, and Mr. Bog said that he would like to hold it on Wednesday the sixteenth, I guess if that's a consensus of the rest of the board with no flexibility for change, then more can speak up.
I'm flexible on the twenty-second.
As am I.
I was not involved in any of the boards or commissions, and I have my time at the board. Sixteenth is on my schedule, and that's the date I would appreciate sticking to.
Mr. Brown?
I would stick to the sixteenth also.
I know that Mrs. Joy, you remember her, and I'm sure she told you that she doesn't mind switching the meeting around, but I think it's, do you feel comfortable having another meeting without Mr. Tursey?
Yeah, I have things going on too, so I'm just thinking of all the dates, I can't type it, but I'm available.
I guess I'm going to say, Mr. Tursey, have a wonderful time and a great educational experience in Washington, but we will be holding the Wednesday, September sixteenth meeting at five o'clock.
Thank you.
Sale of the bus, B under E. Does Milton need to buy a bus? Sorry. You never know, they might.
If they do, that was good for the situation.
Yeah, the transportation department is requesting approval to sell the scheduled bus, and it's bus number one.
What, I mean, is it out of commission? Yeah, is it, is it not running? Is it one of our reserve buses now that we have?
Maybe with everything running so tightly, maybe we reevaluate getting rid of a bus or buying a bus this year.
That may be a great idea, Bob, because it seems to me that the taxpayers do foot substantial size of budget just to buy a new bus, and this bus here is probably, well, I don't know, but the newest bus, it could be newer than the newest.
Nathan, will you be able to attend the next meeting? On the sixteenth, are you going on holiday to the educational summit? Okay. So do we like to have maybe a schedule, a, a new schedule put on and maybe reevaluate getting rid or purchasing a new unit this year? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, because, I mean, it says it's only got a hundred and seventy thousand. I mean, I know people think a hundred and seventy, but when you're talking about a diesel engine, I mean, that, that's still a baby. I mean, diesel engines go for a million miles. Why are we just going to, I mean, is there something catastrophic about this bus that it's, we just discard it and buy a new one?
I think it's just in the summary of, like, I think it's just in the plan to rejuvenate. Mr. Oled?
My question that I asked already was, is there something wrong with that we have to do that? Is it out of commission?
No.
Is it being used now?
I believe it's one of the reserves.
Is there ever circumstance that we need, you said four? Is there any reason that we ever need four reserve buses?
At one time?
Yeah.
We, we were told the reason why we have four spares is so that we will not have to pay rental charges when we need a bus, because it's five hundred dollars a day to rent a bus, and that was the reason why we need four spare buses.
Two big ones, two of them. Right, okay, but do we all, do we ever use all four one time?
Well, I think the two little ones wouldn't be able to pick up a full load anyway, so I think we need to look at the whole picture before we make a decision on that, so, yes.
And I'll ask Mr. Oled to meet here.
That'd be great.
So he can answer any questions.
While, while we're on buses...
Yep.
The board has already voted on, all, all buses are supposed to be locked at all times when they're down at the town garage. I was down there Friday, and not all buses were locked, especially the brand-new one that pulled into the yard while I was standing there.
That bus was unlocked specifically because the people that were coming to install the new radio were coming that day, so it was locked, so they couldn't...
Well, this was late in the afternoon.
Maybe someone would come back through, lock it back up, maybe?
Who's going to lock it?
The tour there unlocked the bus in there that day?
Yes, there was more than one bus.
Total three.
You guys actually, like, go around and check that stuff?
Yeah.
Well, because, see, the problem is, is we were told originally, you can't park them down there, because they'll be vandalized if you do.
I don't know, half the time I drive around and you see buses from all of the districts, and the doors are propped open so they don't get locked out, so I don't, I don't, I don't know what happened before with the previous board of the transportation community, so...
But it, but it only...
But we, there are cameras down there, which I don't know how often they get checked either, but...
But that's the, to lock them up, so that, it's a, because it's a security issue, a safety issue. They're, they're supposed to be, whenever they're locked down there, they're supposed to be locked at all times.
Okay, so can you please tell Mr. Eldridge that we want to go over the breakdown of purchasing and releasing of buses, as well as the security of the units while, the security of the unit, plain and simple? Anything else?
I'm having his bus replacement schedule and security of buses.
Speaking of which, have we checked those cameras out?
We change the batteries out periodically, but we don't check them.
I understand you don't check the batteries. Have they been? And so they, they should be sufficient?
Change the batteries, and we change the cars a couple times a year, unless something happens. If something were to happen...
But, but we are, we're keeping up on that, so there should be...
Are there any questions for Mr. Eld, any other questions that we have for Mr. Eldridge while we're going to have him in present next meeting?
Is there any specific questions issued, or should we have them attend, so we can prepare and answer them?
Wonderful, thank you. Moving on to new business, C, governmental accounting standards, board's number forty-five. Nathan?
It has been, we found out that it's time to renew our... OPEP numbers.
Our what?
Other, other benefits for employees.
What do you mean, other benefits?
For retirees.
Retirement insurance benefits?
Correct. Overall, we're going to pay retirees each year. Every three years, we need to get it reviewed. Have an actuary come in and...
And what are you asking for us?
This is more just information. It's something that's required as part of our audit process. It's a three-year process, and it's going to be an additional cost that we're going to anticipate.
How much?
Two thousand nine hundred and fifty.
That's the cheapest route to do it and the most legal way to do it?
Do we put it out to bid? And what is this again for?
It's what the GASP forty-five, we have to do it every three years.
It covers what in retirement?
It explains our costs for post-unemployment benefits that we're required to pay for the next three years.
Okay, so I want...
It's a layout on it?
Explain to me what post-employment benefits are. I would like a breakdown of what you're having evaluated.
Did you mean to say post-unemployment?
Post-employment.
No, unemployment, yeah.
Post-employment, retiring, right? Post-employment?
Right, I believe he said post-unemployment. But if he didn't, I didn't mean to talk like that.
But it's, these are people who have worked their time and are...
Yes.
Okay, so can you explain to me what those benefits are? What's being audited?
It's an anticipated cost for health insurance for retirees.
We can't just call the insurance company and say, do a three-year average for us. You can't do that.
It has to go through this GASP forty-five process.
So anticipated costs for health insurance, dental? What else is included in that?
Retirement.
So retirement, the state portion and then our portion?
Yeah.
And the state portion is increasing, is that correct?
Yes.
Or decreasing?
Decreasing.
Decreasing. Now, have we budgeted for that decrease?
We budget for it, but every year we, we have to make some sort of estimate for retirement. You notice during the budget cycle, we come to preliminary numbers that are an estimate for retirement, and we tend to get retirement numbers some way, midway through the, in the budget cycle, when we make adjustments again, preferably we get them early, but that hasn't seemed to be the case.
Mr. Bog?
So it says governmental accounting standards. Is this federal governmental, or is this the state government?
Central.
Federal? Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Is that twenty-nine fifty, or does that cover everyone? All retirees?
That, that covers the necessary paperwork that they have to do, those calculations involved.
And this is just to do paperwork?
This is to fill in calculations to show exactly what we expect to pay for the next three years.
And we can, we don't have the equipment to audit ourselves?
We can't audit yourself.
What I'm saying is, you can get it. I don't know.
It has to be audited by outside scores.
Mr. Bog?
Is this part of the assurances that we have you, ask you to make to the federal government before we gain those federal grants?
Mr. Brown?
Well, why can't we have the auditing firm that we use every year do this?
It's separate from the audit, the actual school district budget audit.
I understand that, but while they're already here, it would probably be less than three thousand dollars.
It's outside of the scope of order. It's not my actuary.
They can't, they're bound by law, and they can't do work like that.
How many retired employees do we have at this point in time?
I'm sorry?
How many retired employees does it, are we, do we have at this point in time? Can you send it to me? Perfect.
To all of us?
All of us. Mrs. Colbath, you said you wanted to be able to ask questions during this period?
Yes, my understanding of the GASP forty-five, the town does the same thing. We fill out a GASP forty-five, and last budget season, they decided, we were talking about not doing it, because we have no liabilities, because, as far as the town goes, because we don't pay anything out for retirees. But you have to do it, because, because you do pay out for retirees. Now, is the twenty-nine fifty... Now, is the twenty-nine fifty for one year?
Three.
No, for three years.
For three years?
Yeah.
And who's doing it? Jefferson Solutions?
Yes.
Okay. So, your auditors suggested Jefferson Solutions?
Um, no. We used Jefferson Solutions three years ago.
Okay. But you haven't done it for the last three years, correct?
Correct, because three years ago, they did it for the three years. So, it's something that happens every three years.
It only started in two thousand eleven. So, eleven, twelve, thirty, but you haven't done it for the last couple of years.
We didn't have to. So, we're due. We're due.
And is Jefferson Solutions the only company that offers this for us in this area at that price?
Well, the town pays thirty-eight hundred, so the twenty-nine fifty is actually the price.
Any other questions or concerns? I know there's concerns. Any other questions?
No other questions?
Old Business? B, Facilities Truck and Trailer. I don't know if you put this on yet.
I sure did. Pretty disturbed by what happened at the last school board meeting.
In regards to what, Mr. Brown?
Oh, not much difference, but it's, uh... Facilities truck was... We were told that we would have to buy a facilities truck. The board took action to buy a trailer so that Joe's truck wouldn't get damaged. Didn't buy the trailer. Joe's truck gets damaged. Joe's driving his truck over the transfer station. We hire or pay for two dumpsters in this background here. Why are we paying mileage to Joe to go to the transfer station to bump into... Bump his truck into a concrete abutment and then cut a check and say, "We're not gonna get a trailer"? How did we... How did that transpire? Because we talked about the monies we were gonna spend on a trailer. We chewed it over pretty hard, and we made a directive.
We didn't.
Bob wants to say so.
Oh, tell me for more. Didn't you put some money up for these trailers though?
I thought I did, but...
That wasn't accepted, right?
I don't know what was done really.
Did you get your check? If you got your check, then they didn't take it.
Well, I'm saying if that's the case, I can't take them, right? The problem that I have is the board made a directive.
Yes.
Now, we're being told we can't get a facilities trailer. My real question is, why are we even going to the transfer station? We've got two dumpsters that we paid for right here. And the next day, I came over. I went down in the basement. We were told the basement was damp and watery. And the dehumidifier down there...
Can we keep it on one topic at a time? Can we just do... Can we do the basement on one topic?
Well...
And then the truck on another?
The trailer is the issue.
Okay.
We had a directive. We were gonna buy a trailer to save the truck. Came over the next day, the same day I went downstairs, looked over the trucks. Jeez, what a great paint job. And then I noticed the sales sticker still on the back tailgate. So, I crawled over the truck and I talked to Joe. Who did the paint job? "Oh, that hasn't been done yet." I said, "What do you mean? And where's the damage?" Joe took me out there and he pointed his finger on the damage, but I still... I put my glasses on, and I couldn't see the damage. We cut a check, apparently, to pay somebody to repair the damage. The day after we had that discussion, I found out from Joe that the damage hadn't been repaired yet. Why are we cutting checks if the damage hasn't been repaired?
We didn't get the check too.
Who knows?
Dana collision.
Who?
Dana collision, Rochester.
And then we're told we're not gonna get a trailer. So, where does that come from?
Mr. Brown?
The bigger problem is the superintendent taking it upon himself to take funds that the school board... Not only did the school board approve, but the budget committee approved, a specific purpose for it. The superintendent does not have the authority to take funds that were approved by the school board and the budget committee for a specific purpose and just tell the board, "Well, this is what's gonna happen. This damage is gonna be replaced, uh, or repaired. You're not getting a trailer," and that's that. It's a violation of school board policy, and it's also against the law because the superintendent doesn't have that authority. If that is allowed to happen... That cannot be allowed to happen. If the superintendent doesn't have the authority, it was an illegal act.
Okay. Mr. Jersey, can you speak to that, please?
Sure. First, I'd like to know, Mr. Brown, what law you're referring to. And I'd also like to know what policy I violated by making the decision to spend those monies, please. And second, I would like to say that I have the authority to manage a budget. The budget committee and the board approves a bottom-line budget, and I'm responsible for that budget and the expenditures within that budget. The policy that has to come to the board is pretty expensive, three thousand dollars or more. And you talked about bidding processes, but to come to the board to pay for an employee's vehicle that was damaged, I did make that decision because I'm responsible for all employees, all students, and the management of that budget. That is my responsibility.
I am gonna say, and I just want to... You've already spoken, so can I just say once?
Absolutely.
What I would like to say is that I did have a conversation with you because, um, I was concerned that in most cases, when someone chooses to use their vehicle, if there are dumpsters available and I don't know what material he was bringing to the dump, but it would be like... It would be very much like you choosing to use your car to go to Concord and hitting a concrete barrier in the parking garage. Would we be responsible for paying for that? And I guess the question has me a little baffled. I can see where he doesn't have an alternative vehicle. If the items he was bringing to the dumpster or to the facility were too big to fit into the dumpster or something that's not allowed to go into a dumpster, and he almost doesn't have a choice but to use his vehicle, I can see paying his deductible, but that's why this employee has insurance. And I don't necessarily know... I guess, you know, I went home and I thought about it, and it didn't settle quite right with me because... And I told you that on the phone. I had gone home, I thought about it, and sometimes making a decision right there on the minute. But I put myself in that situation that if it was you in Concord, you wouldn't be paying. So, Mr. Fogg, go ahead.
So, every teacher pulls into the parking lot, parks their clothes. Now, because we have a precedent set, if I open up the door and hit a teacher's door, since it's on the job, we're gonna pay for the damage of the teacher's door. Precedent's been set. The fact of the matter is, the facility here has two dumpsters in that yard, and it's a top that'll be way bigger than the back of anybody's truck. There's nothing coming out of the school building that can't fit into those dumpsters. And for us to no longer have the funds for a trailer, which we, as a board, decided that money was to be spent, and you cannot... You do not have the authority to say, "Well, the money was meant for a trailer, but I'm gonna give it to Joe, and we're not getting a trailer." You do not have that authority.
Mr. Oled?
My question is, why didn't we buy the trailer in that time anyway? So, when we had that...
Well, if we had the trailer, the situation could have still happened, but we wouldn't have a vehicle to pull the trailer if Mr. Williams wasn't using his own truck. So, you know, it's like a catch-22.
We don't need to go to the transfer station.
I don't know why we go to the transfer station.
So, we don't need a trailer?
I don't know what materials...
Because we're paying mileage is why we're going to the transfer station.
Well, then, that's ridiculous, and we should put a stop to it. But can you tell us what the exact prices for the repair and what the repairs actually were?
They weren't done when the check was cut.
I was told that...
That's a huge...
I was told when I called that the repairs were done.
I crawled all over the truck, and I couldn't see... I thought it was a great repair job because... And then I noticed the same thing when I talked to Joe.
I'm just waiting to see a response before we...
Joe told me the day after we had the discussion, and we were told we're not getting a trailer, we need a facilities truck. Joe told me that there's been no repair done. And I questioned Joe. Why... How can we be cutting a check? The repairs have not been done.
All right. Let's wait for Mr. Jersey's response, please.
The total cost is one thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
And can you explain to me the work that was done? What was the number again? One thousand eight hundred?
Thirty-five. One thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
Okay. And what was the repairs done to the vehicle? Or what was the damage done? Do we have pictures of the damage? If we paid for it, do we have pictures of it? And did our insurance company cover it?
Our insurance co... Our liability insurance covered five hundred dollars.
Okay, so you must have had to send pictures to our insurance to get that payment.
I'm not sure if an appraisal covered it.
I would think so. If we're paying for it, we should know what we did, right? So, can you tell me what the damage done to the vehicle was?
I prefer just to give it to you on its detail and the breakdown.
Yeah, send it around. We can all think if we got it. Thank you.
The damage that was pointed to me that I couldn't see at the end of Joe's fingertip was underneath the back bottom of the bumper. I looked and I looked, and I... Even at the end of his fingertip. But, you know, I drive around dancing in a chair. Trailer hitch cover.
Trailer hitch cover? Why are we... That's an accessory. Why are we paying for that?
Does it describe the repair, the damage?
What does it describe, Mr. Fogg?
Maybe the front page does, I'm sorry.
It says, "There's a lot of damage to the bedside."
Left or right?
It says outer LT. Did that be... But then it says bedside panel lower LF, which you would think would be rough. But there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight... Eight bedside panels.
Is it date covered there?
Is it date covered?
Eight bedside panels?
The day after we had the discussion, Joe told me it hadn't been moved in again.
Is it date covered up to now, you know?
No.
Did you...
It's not that he already had.
Did you visually see the damage?
Yes.
Can you... Can you explain to me the damage that was done to his truck and how?
Simply, it was... He hit his bumper, and it was pushed in towards the rear board panel. That's what he showed.
Driver's side or passenger's side?
Driver's side.
So, the midsection was damaged?
But it's listing the bedside panels.
Maybe it was underneath, but I didn't...
Trail... Trailer hitch cover.
Did that get damaged?
Corrosion protection.
Who did the... Yes, the insurance company did it.
Data's collisions from farming, then I just go...
The fact of the matter is, the day after, we were told that we weren't getting a facilities trailer. I looked at the truck. I was told the damage had not been repaired, but the check had been cut. How does that happen? Because we're being trusted. We trust. But we're questioning why we don't trust. I don't get it. Huge problem.
Can you just see where we're having difficulty with this? Or can you not see why we're having difficulty with this?
We got pictures of this.
There should be pictures of before and after. I don't see any of them.
To answer your question, Monia, did the seat difficulty within this? We have a basically head custodian that is utilizing his vehicle to do work. And his vehicle was damaged because that was the option... It was the only option he had at the time to bring the materials to the dump. I felt that it was our responsibility to cover that damage. Therefore, I wanted to make sure that the impact isn't charged because he was using it for work. And knowing that he wasn't going to have a truck to pull the trailer because he is not using his truck anymore, took the monies to pay for the damage because we're not gonna have any means of pulling the trailer.
Are you saying that you knew before he went to the dump that he wasn't gonna use his own truck anymore?
No. This was after.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask the custodian, whatever comes out of the building, heads into these dumpsters that are parked right out here in the backyard. No more trips to the transfer station. I don't know what we say mileage, but we'll say anymore. And then I have another motion after this one.
Mr. Brown? A motion on a... Is it second discussion?
A second for discussion. We're also opening up a can because if you're paying someone for mileage, they're using their personal vehicle, this is opening a whole can of worms that anyone else can do. Well, you paid for Joe's, now you gotta pay for mine. And I totally disagree with the superintendent's summation that he has the authority to expend whatever monies he'd like because if that was the case, why don't... Why doesn't he just approve the man who's pressed himself?
I hear what you're saying. I'm gonna... From hearing what both of you said, um, you would like to have this moved to the policy committee? And make it a policy?
No, I think a directive from the school board is in order that the dumpsters that we pay... We paid for the dumpsters.
We take a directive, but if there's not a specific... We can take a directive right now, but if there's not a specific policy in place, we're gonna end up in the same situation we are with the buses. It's a directive that was given, but it's forgotten. So, if it's in a policy stating, you know, use in-house as much, you know, and if not possible, clear it, then we don't have any backing. I mean, we have backing, but we're all gonna be shuffling through minutes to try and find it. So, I can see making a directive now to alleviate the problem because we don't wanna put ourselves out there. But also, stick, you know, moving forward and putting it in a policy will make it very clear.
Well, now, I have two more issues on that.
Well, I... That's my opinion. It may not be the same as yours.
I make a motion to address that afterwards. I mean, I appreciate that.
A new bumper was put on.
A new bumper?
Well, not yet.
Uh, the work hasn't been done. He's picking it up.
No, he said it's going tomorrow.
He's picking it up tomorrow.
Oh.
So, the date of that?
It's gonna be today if it's getting ready tomorrow.
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty?
That's the estimate.
That's the estimate, right.
Mr. Jersey?
Just for clarification, what if there is a item that you can't go to the dumpster?
What could this school possibly have?
What have you done in the past?
We have radioactive waste here or something? I mean, this...
What do we have? I mean, what, you mean paint?
Yeah, toxic items that just drop in the dump.
Like what?
Paint.
Paint, there's two different times every year that we have it.
You're asking... The question was, what could be brought in?
And I'm answering the questions.
Question.
Can't put computers in the dumpster?
No, you can't.
It goes green. TVs.
Oh, that's all right.
So...
So, there's a specific list of what's not acceptable. So, if it's not acceptable...
Well, the town opens it up to taking it back.
Alright, I, I, I guess I, I don't know what to do in this instance. I, I understand the situation's already been done and we can't rectify it at this point in time, but we can't.
Well, I get another motion coming, actually.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, can you, Mary, can you please repeat the motion?
Um, Mr. Brown made a motion to use the dumpsters out back and not go to the transfer station.
Mr. Brown, second to the discussion.
Second discussion?
Yeah.
What happens with they have a slew of stuff?
Screens or like?
Well, in that case, with paint and screens and monitors and stuff, they, they have an open day, I think twice a year in town. But we still have to get it there.
We, we have already been told by the superintendent what's gonna happen with that, and that's not gonna happen anymore. So now we're at the position where this motion is anyways. Because the superintendent has told us, that's not gonna happen. Because that vehicle will no longer be used. So, it doesn't matter, you're not, you, you can't take it to the dump because the superintendent told us what's gonna happen.
Well, I, I do have to say, maybe Milton will let us borrow the industry truck where they borrowed off us. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm, Mr. Churchy?
I can't make Mr. Williams not, or, not use or use his truck. Mr. Williams is very clear that he's not gonna use his truck. So I'm not telling the board that that truck is not gonna be used because it's not, for me to say that. He is not going to use his truck. And it's been very clear that if we have to move anything off, off the property, that we'll be renting a, some sort of vehicle to transport those materials.
Do you pardon me?
Just for clarification.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
I bet we could get a heck of a deal from Wakefield Brothers Remodeling and come over and pick up anything and everything that the school district could possibly want to throw away.
Okay, let's move the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second motion would be put the money back in for the trailer. Because the trailer is something that can be utilized to move things from one part of the facilities to the dumpsters.
But by whose vehicle, Paul?
I'm sure there's...
We don't have a vehicle on premise to use it.
I bet this huge bus, pretty good vehicle, put a trailer hitch on it.
I do have a question. We just serviced the lawnmower, does the lawnmower have a trailer hitch on the back?
You can put one on it.
And then that would give him his little go-to vehicle around, right around premise.
I suppose we don't have a board.
Motion be to, to the dumpster. And what was that again, Mr. R, Mr. Can you repeat that, ma'am?
My, my motion was to put the money back in to our lines for the, I believe it was a fifteen hundred dollar appropriation. And probably get a trailer that would go from the end of the grounds, our, our huge facility here, to the dumpsters. Whatever you need to haul out of, whether it's coming out of the basement or not. There are cans of paint and stuff in the facility, that's a money there. If you got a lawnmower, hook the trailer up to it, load it in, throw it in the dumpster. The dumpsters.
Can we maybe have a little time to think on that? Would you be opposed to like putting that on the next agenda? I, I...
No, I'm not opposed to that.
You know, because it's crazy, I understand that. If we have no vehicle, the trailer is obsolete. So...
And the lawnmower might, might not get a fellow here.
But there's...
That, and the lawnmower may not, it depends on who volunteers to do it.
Well, and the best...
And if we hire Wakefield disposal, then, I mean, that's all, I, I think I'm gonna make a motion and bring this, that, that's...
No, my motion fails, will I?
I, I, yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion to bring that to the policy committee.
I'll second that.
Just for, I, I believe that, don't you think it's important to have a po, how do you govern that? Like, if we make a directive, how do you, I'm looking at you, unless you make a policy, how do you keep that so everybody knows it? So when we're saying, well, what policy is that, we can say it's this policy.
So it sounds like a policy around the process for disposal of?
Of items in the building. Is that right?
And I don't know if there's a sale of policy to use.
There may not be, but how else do we, I, I don't even know. I don't, how else do you protect yourself?
Well, the bottom line, that we don't have a, a policy submitted, we have to discuss and develop here.
I understand that, but that way it would come to us. So we need to make a decision without a, I don't know.
In my opinion, you need to...
What's your opinion?
You need a facilities truck.
I don't think, I don't think we need something.
Sure. As I said in the last meeting, I believe, is that you should look at purchasing a facilities vehicle.
And what am I doing?
And that eliminates all issues.
The dumpsters in the back parking lot eliminates all the issues because they're there.
Take the Z-tire off it. You could, you could put a dump, you could cut the part of the back off it and use it as a pickup truck.
It's all silly talk because we have two dumpsters that we've al, we already paid that things can go in.
Okay. So we've made that clear on our directive for Joe and, um...
I'll give you a motion, hold on a second.
To bring the calls.
Did you, someone seconded that or did it die?
Steve said.
Okay. Um, I think...
We'll create a policy for it somehow.
I don't, I...
It's proper use of facility dumpsters, I guess. I mean, if there's something that can't go in the dumpster, set aside.
Or use of personal vehicles at work.
There are people who go up there looking through computer screens and old computers to grab and salvage.
So use of personal vehicles at work? I mean, we can, no?
The precedent's been set, if you damage your vehicle while you're working, then you're gonna get paid for it.
No. To me, that makes more, that policy makes more sense than determining how the disposal of materials.
So do you wanna put the, um, put it on the next agenda?
Personal use of vehicles.
Okay. Can we all do a little bit of research on that and clarify what you want and what everybody else wants from the affair?
I'll do my homework.
Thank you. Um, yep?
Like I said, we got a bigger issue with the superintendent expending monies on his own. He can't do that. That's, that's the, that's the board. The board approves, that's why we have to approve the manifest. The superintendent can't take something that the school board and the budget committee approve for a specific purpose and just say, oh, school board, that's not gonna happen anymore. I've made the decision, it's against the law.
Okay, now, isn't that what, why you brought it to us and we approved it at the last meeting?
We didn't approve anything. Watch the video, just like Mr., the superintendent said, I never said that Joe, uh, that Joe wasn't using his vehicle. Watch the video, we clearly stated, Joe will not use his vehicle anymore, period.
Okay. Mr. Olet?
Going back to my original question, you had fifteen hundred dollars for a trailer. Where did that money come from?
The budget.
The budget, none of that came from?
No.
The, we, we discussed twenty-five, spending twenty-five hundred dollars on crates for the trailer. We also discussed taking donations. And the last number I knew was fifteen hundred dollars to get a trailer. Whether monies were coming, I, I don't mind donating, stipend.
No, but I just wanted to make sure.
I don't mind.
No, but to the best of my ability and from what I've read budgetary-wise, your stipend was not used.
Well, we can use it somewhere else. I'm gonna get it back.
Well, that's good, I'm glad for you. I, that's good. But I understand that he brought it to us.
My, my point was, you can't give somebody else's money away.
You can't give someone else's money away, but he does have the discretionary ability, we give him the discretionary ability to, to budget, don't we?
Not redirect funds that are raised and appropriated for a specific purpose.
It's like appropriating funds. You can't...
Okay, so I understand that you're upset. What would you like, what is the action you're discussing?
We actually had a, a big topic, topic about this, of how to get the money to buy a trailer.
Yep.
Yeah, new understanding.
Right, I went over a whole bunch of things. And now it's kinda wiped off the table, we're not even getting the trailer.
Yep.
Kinda like wasting your time?
A little bit.
Wh, wh, why are we even here? The superintendent's just gonna, no, you're not spending, I'm spending the money the way I see fit.
Okay.
Not the way the board sees it.
I think, I think Mr. Churchy did what he felt was right in that situation, in that time, in that situation.
That's correct.
And I, I don't think...
And he's wrong.
That's a, it's okay, that's, that, if that's your opinion.
He had the authority. He doesn't have the authority. Does not have that authority.
Okay.
Have the freedom to run the business.
Yes, sir, you do.
No.
Okay, let's move on, ten, correspondence.
Or should have the freedom to run the business.
No, actually, I was gonna say, I learned something during the withdrawal committee process. Part of that responsibility as a superintendent is to execute the will of the board, the publicly elected officials. That's part of your responsibility. I saw it with my own three eyes, black and white on a piece of paper. That's your job.
Thank you. I, I think Mr. Churchy understands that we all have disagreements on it. I, I think that we need to do what we can to rectify it now. This situation's done, the check's been done, the services are even done.
It's been set.
We're gonna have to fix it by policy then, regretfully, that's gonna be our job to fix it by policy.
But it's under the, and the policy already exists under the direction of the board. Why, if, if you, no, you can't allow this to happen. Because what's gonna happen tomorrow, when the superintendent deems that twenty-five thousand, he needs twenty-five thousand dollars? He's got, no, you can't, that's a board decision, not the superintendent's decision. That is illegal.
Okay.
Do we still have a motion on the floor and second, are we gonna call it?
No, we're gonna move it to the, we're gonna move it to the, we're gonna bring a policy to go to the next agenda.
Use of personal vehicles.
All right, use of personal vehicles. Okay, um, I think we're gonna agree and disagree. I'm gonna, I, you haven't, you're, you're very clear.
Well, then I'm, then I'm calling the state of New Hampshire. Because this is illegal, this is misappropriating fine.
Mr. Brown, could you listen to me?
This is illegal, I'm calling the state and...
Could you listen to me before you fly off the handle?
Oh, I'm not flying off the handle.
Okay.
But I don't appreciate misappropriations of other people's tax dollars.
And that's not what happened.
Oh, that's clearly what happened.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Number ten, correspondence, Mr. Churchy?
Put it on the next agenda, please.
I have it. Madam Chair?
Yes.
If anything is gonna come out of this, some sort of requirement, it needs to be brought up at the SAU joint board level, town, or town level board.
So now, so now Milton is expending Wakefield's tax dollars.
Okay, I think what you're doing and what you're saying is you're both very clearly stating your opinions on what happened, but you are not giving me a directive of what you'd like to see done. So if you can say that to us, like, I understand your frustration and I understand yours, but you're not giving us a directive of what you'd like us to do to clarify the situation? Like, what do you want us to do to rectify the situation?
I thought I had a directive, but I was told that it had to go to policy, so...
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what, what else can we do other than that?
Water under the bridge.
No, 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 I, because I, I don't know the policy number off the top of my head, but it's under, I believe it's under the duties of the superintendent.
Okay.
And it's, and, and that is under the direction of the board.
Okay, so you, Mr. Churchy has asked you, you told Mr. Churchy that he broke a policy in a law, he asked you to get that information for him. So if you can get that information in him and tell him which policy and what law he broke, then we can discuss it again at the next agenda.
Title III, Article 32 is what I've been...
Title III, Article 32.
Mm-hmm.
Judy?
Was that checked in that manifest?
Yep.
The check was in last week's manifest.
Okay, and did the board, did the board approve that manifest?
Yes, we did.
Did the board approve that check?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the purpose of the manifest?
Not always true.
All right, but the purpose of the manifest is the bills are brought to you to approve. That check wasn't given out until after you approved it.
Right, and the discussion that incurred, I thought we were...
Right, but we didn't know that the work wasn't ordered.
No, but I'm just saying, that's the purpose of the manifest.
Yes, ma'am.
Is to bring, the superintendent's bringing the bills forward to you to approve and add. There's been several instances where we've pulled checks out before and said, we're not paying this. But the manifest is signed, and if you sign that manifest, you approve that check.
So we chose not to do that in this instance, so now we have to do what we can with...
No, I'm regretting signing the man.
I'm sorry, okay.
Why are you doing?
Um, eleven, comments from the public.
Mrs. Goldback? A question about indirect costs. Uh, that's to manage the grants, that's what indirect cost is. Is it now coming to the, uh, school district rather than staying at the SAU, the indirect cost amount? Or is that just listed in the grants and it still stays at the SAU?
It's listed in the grants, it goes to the SAU.
Stays at the SAU and manages grants.
Yeah, yeah.
At one time I was in the schools and then it went to the SAUs and I just wondered if you were breaking that out.
And then the revenues that we get for that go to offset, um, our budget?
Right, right, I understand that. Uh, I was talking to somebody that, uh, works in town and they were saying you might want to check with, uh, the town to see if you could use or have somebody from the dump, because there's a dump truck, I mean, a truck at the dump. Make some kind of arrangement for them to come pick up things like paint cans. That may be an option for you. I know you're gonna discuss this at your next meeting and brainstorm, but this is something you might wanna check out. And do you have the results of, the NUI results? Because that's an instant, uh, you have results instantly, do you have those results? You have that? I don't think you've given them out yet.
For which?
The NUI tests from last year?
Let's go, Madam Chair. Uh, take a look. I'm not sure if it's all.
Because I don't remember seeing any results. In fact, I think Mrs. Nathan asked about them at one point.
Usually we're seeing them over the summer, don't we? With great, what kids go back to school?
Public, at least, parents.
Yeah, don't we get them in the mail?
Yeah, you need to go home to, to the store.
But the results are instant, yeah.
Can we, um, you won't be here, but can we add that to October's?
We, we get a preliminary result, then we get a detailed result a couple weeks later.
And, and, Mrs. Nathan?
The indirect costs that you're talking about, if we're a single district SAU, those costs are gonna go back to the district.
Yes, they will.
Um, and another thing, um, I was wondering, the SAU joint board voted to, uh, return fifty thousand dollars of the SAU surplus this year.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering how that's done.
Next year's, year 25?
The vote was to return it from this year. The vote was taken and it was to return it this year.
Yep.
So I'd like to know what the accounting for that is, how is it returned? Is it a credit to the SAU budget and then the school districts pay less money? Or how is that going to be?
I believe it's, um, taken out of the, um, balance and a, a check is issued to each district.
And will that be done?
That should be your revenue on this year's budget.
Reported at the end of this fiscal year.
No, you voted for that months ago.